By the way, my name is Van White. I am president of the Rochester City School District Board of Education. I am joined by other members of the Board of Education, Malik Evans, this gentleman sitting right here, and Willa Powell, she is also commissioner. Others are expected shortly. Oh, I saw Melissa with food, oh, she's back there with the food. First of all, I want to say, oh, and our student rep, Unique. First thing I want to do, again, I've never done this before, it's really an honor to be in this position. I make a promise, I keep it, I'm gonna wear my hat one more time. All right? Go Griffins, go Griffins. All right, I want you all to know, I made a promise that I was gonna wear that hat until the end of your championship run, and I have never been prouder to wear a hat in my entire life. Let's give these Griffins another round of applause. And you know when you're superstars, when you're famous, people ask for your autograph, right? Is that what happens? You guys are famous, you guys are top of the line, you guys are the people that people look up to. So, appropriately, I am going to ask, I went to Walmart, I don't know nothing about soccer except the Griffins, and how fantastic they play, and I know they're apparently different sizes to soccer balls, the best I can come up with is four, that's not a real size, is it? It's supposed to be five? I think it's supposed to be five. Okay, all right, I'm learning, I'm learning, but it doesn't make any difference to me, 'cause I want you all's autograph on this ball. Every player, and listen, I bought one for the school district, but this one is mine. So y'all have to sign twice as we celebrate the Griffin's victory. Let's give them a round of applause. Make sure you sign and keep going, all right? Again, let's give them a round of applause. Now, this journey would not have been possible without each and every one of you. So, we're gonna take the time, but we're gonna do it quickly, 'cause you guys need to know, we have some business to take care of, even though yours is the most important business of the day. So what I'd like to do, is with my colleagues' permission, is have each and every one of you stand up and say your name, and say what grade you're in. Could you do that for us? Yes, you can. All right, let's start with this gentleman at the end, you right there, stand up, say your name loud so everybody can hear. All right, all right, all right, let's give them a round of applause. Next gentleman, come on guys, keep it coming, keep it coming. All right now, go ahead, stand up. Turn around, man, so they can see what a good player you are, person you are. All right, keep it coming, keep it coming. All right, all right, keep going, keep going. Look, he drying his signature off, make sure it sticks. All right. All right, that's the goalie right there, I know that much. All right, all right, all right. All right, don't be shy. All right. Alex, speaking of proud, all right, Alex. Urban, all right. All right. Now, I'm gonna let Carlos give you all the details, but I want these gentlemen to just sit there, turn around, and look at all these people who are gonna give you a standing ovation. Come on, let's give them a standing ovation. We are so proud of you. All right now, as y'all stand up, we're gonna do what we did over the last few weeks. Give me a G! Give me a R! Give me an I! Give me an F! Give me another F! Give me an I! Give me an N! Give me an S! What's it spell? What's it spell? Griffins! I think that's the last time I'm gonna lose my voice. Carlos, come on up.
Oh, man, I don't know if I can follow, Van. I just wanna share a couple of things before we get started. One, just what a wonderful experience we've all kind of encountered this past season, and the journey that you've all put us, you know, took us through. You know, before that, though, I'd like to thank, not only Dr. Vargas, but the Board of Education for their continued support to the Department of Health, P.E., and Athletics. This is just the beginning, as Mr. Rogers shared in our last, you know, during our last game, this is the beginning of some very special things that are about to happen in the Rochester City School District. And these young men are really the epitome of what sports is in Rochester, or what we're looking for to exemplify throughout the district as a whole. What I believe we have personally taken from this experience is learning from a team with a high level of character, leadership, teamwork, respect, pride, passion, commitment, dedication, adversity, and composure, just to name a few things. And what I hope that we do as a group of young men here is that we continue to model all those things, not only on the field, but in our classroom, and in this community as a whole. As Mr. White shared, you are individuals that are looked up to in this community, and you've planted a seed where we've got youth, some of them are here already, excited to be members of this program, so continue to lead the way you did out there on the field, in the classroom, and in this community as a whole. One big thing I wanna share as far as attendance, and overall GPA, the, this program here overall had a 97.8 overall attendance rate. Nine students, perfect attendance. Five students with at least 98 percent. And our overall average GPA was 3.0. With Alexander Burnell leading with a 4.13 GPA. I mean, I can also thank, I mean, I can thank the, just the world of inquiry as a whole, this community as a whole, I mean, the, we came in small numbers at times, we were much louder than anyone else out there on the field, so it was just great, the fans were a huge contributor to what took place, and I think the experience as a whole was one that I think we'll never forget, and I hope all of you cherish this as you move on. I'd like to, I'm not sure if Ms. Webster is here, but I'd like to introduce Ms. Andrew Colicch Diaz. So this program is a principal of the Rochester International Academy, and her and Ms. Webster are key in this program as a whole, so I wanna just have her say a few words.
Thank you. Didn't know I was speaking, but I am the principal of the Rochester International Academy, but I'm also a product of the Rochester City School District, graduating from Franklin High School a very, very long time ago. And I was a phys ed teacher, and an athletic director, assistant principal, principal, and my greatest times was as a coach. I coached for almost 20 years in the city school district, and at Wilson, I took the first girls' team to sectionals. But states, guys, history, you're unbelievable. And what I wanna do is that I'm so proud of my students that were allowed and able to play with School of Inquiry. My students, everyone knows, brand new to our country, speak little to no English, one of my students came only in September, and School of Inquiry, the players, the parents, the staff, thank you. You made a home for my students at your home, and I can't thank you enough. And when you hear that you all are setting the stage, you really are, some of you are so young, you have the world at your choosing. And for the seniors that are leaving, you have left such an impact on your community and our community, and I thank all of you, and great jobs, kudos to all of you. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the coach and the assistant coach. The assistant coach is really close to my heart, because she's one of our teachers at the Rochester International Academy, Sarah Leosa Benjamin, and the coach, Dionne Rogers. He and I, I tell him, we're cut from the same cloth, only mine is much older. Dionne is also a product, I think he came from 35 Monroe and then East High School. So I present to you the assistant coach and varsity coach of World of Inquiry.
Good evening. Yeah, I'd like to say yes, I am homegrown, from the Rochester City School District. Someone came to me today, this morning, and they were, said, "Coach, oh, you're such a great coach, coach, and you're an awesome job," I said, "Hold up." I said, "No." They said, "We have great kids." And I said, "No, I'm just like the conductor of an orchestra, and we lead these kids and allow them to grow." And we challenged these young men, me and Coach, we said, "We just don't wanna win on the soccer field, we wanna win off it." And what Carlos, you know, has just told, that just touched my heart, it's just, we won, you know, we won. Our attendance, our GPA, everyone come together, this is what it's about, and, you know, I, again, I played sports in the Rochester City School District, and becoming a teacher in the city school district, I was reluctant on coaching, even though I had coached youth sports for many years, 'cause I said, "I don't, I didn't wanna be another coach that coaches his players, and the players are failing academically, and the players not respecting the game." I said, "No, I'll sit and I'll just coach my seven, eight, nine-year-old sons and grow them from there." But when, having the opportunity to coach these young men has changed my life, and has grown me, and I just wanna tell the young men, thank you for accepting me in, thanks for letting me and Coach lead you, we feel humble, and I am forever changed and grateful. And like I said, I am Coach for life. I am Coach, you can come anytime, I don't care when I'm 70, I am Coach for life, I will be there for you. Couldn't have did it without my assistant coach, who we call Mom, who sometimes kept me straight, always definitely kept the boys straight, but I'm gonna let Coach Benjamin.
Mom, ready to talk?
I'm gonna let her talk. Go ahead, Coach.
He does all the talking, this is my first time up in front of everyone, so it was a nice relationship for the two of us, but really, it's not us, it's all 100% them. They are heart, they are soul, they are the epitome of what we want, our children, I mean, even my own children, I want them to grow up like you. You guys have a special place in my heart, and I thank you for enjoying, for letting me come into your family.
Last, last word. We gotta give it, I wanna give it up to, hm, oh, Mrs. Webster here, our principal. And this represents, you know, she was on the road and made it here, this just, you know, all starts from our leader.
Thank you, thank you all for being so patient, we were racing to get here from Albany and we made it. So, yeah, a little too fast probably, but, so, boys, you know how I feel about you. I love you, and that's where it really starts from. And they're all laughing, because tomorrow, I'm gonna say, "Go to class and where's your pass?" Right? So, what I want you to know is that you have brought alive our motto of crew, not passenger. You've brought it to life, and you've given, we are Griffins, life. Because when we first started the grow-out, we didn't even know how to cheer for teams, we were like, what do we say? Go 58? Go World of Inquiry? Go Lois? And none of that sounded right, but when you allowed us to cheer for Griffins, you brought it to life. So, enjoy all of the history that you're making, but tomorrow, you're gonna show up, and you're gonna go to class, and you're gonna be the best that you can be, because you are all young, and you have lots of, lots of opportunity ahead of you. So I love you. I do wanna say thank you to all the families and the fans, the Griffin fans have been unbelievable, so a big round of applause to all the fans.
I wanna call our seniors, our seniors up here, Jason, Nico, and Israel, please come We, one thing we do, and we don't build followers, we build leaders, and we often ask the kids, "How do, how does a leader lead?" And, by what? How does a leader lead? And the best example we got here is our Commissioner Van White. Everyone gives it up, please. Our seniors would like to present Van White. Everyone, please give it up, y'all just don't know how much it meant, his traveling, him being there, and Van knows, I used to coach Van's son in basketball many years ago, and just to see him there, Mr. Commissioner White, this is for you, we appreciate you, and thanks for leading by example, sir.
Okay, if I can have the players, please come up, I wanna present the certification of recognition. Awarded to World of Inquiry, school number 58 soccer team, presented by the Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools, in recognition of being named Section 5 Class 1 Champions, Class C Champions, New York State Western Regional Champions, New York State Runner-Ups, in Section 9 in the Class C Match, given this 20th day of November 2014. I'd like to present this to Ms. Webster? Or Ms. Andrew Colicch Diaz? Where's Ms. Andrew? Ms. Andrew Colicch Diaz, if you can come up. Oh, this, if I can have the players work their way behind the cake, so that way we can get a picture of the cake as well.
Right here, right here, right here, right here. Let's go, boys.
We're watching Mohammed, and like, Mohammed, don't be shy. There we go, you ready? Alex, I can't see you. This is for the rolling cage.
We gotta say, we got somebody tied.
I think that's where the pile's down.
So we need, maybe a cabinet for the seniors to cut the cake. Help, help, I says, you gotta wear gloves, you gotta wear gloves. I got the, senior, seniors, okay, senior, senior.
I read it.
You remember September.
Yeah, you look.
Okay, cut the cake, come on, we're getting hungry. Don't worry about the plate. We're gonna do a, a taste there, bro.
You gotta earn your cake, they wanna give your highest.
Your pledge.
One, two, three.
We are a world of inquiry, the greatest flag for all our citizens. We shall all be citizens and have to have our votes.
And wonderful ideas, and everyone's playing with the first, giving their life.
I think it's education, I think it's, yeah.
We're gonna roll, we're gonna, guys, we're gonna roll the cake in the back, and they can pick out in the back.
How about in hallway? Yeah, hallway, then they can start to meet.
Let's give them a round of applause.
Hey, 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 stop, everything, 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 I know, I know, Coach, and a couple of you mentioned, but I wanna say this again, there are a lot of great adults who love these kids, love these kids, travel great distance with these kids, young men, young men, grab the camera. I want you guys, I want you guys, to give all these adults here, there's too many to mention, and they, they took their kids, they took their families, they spent time away from films, give these people a round of applause.
I get some.
How are you?
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 Hopefully, did you guys, did you guys get it tested by the Dropbox tires for now?
Was A's here?
No, that's good.
I don't know if any of us were using Dropbox. I do use it, but I haven't used it in months, so.
This is like a loner, I.
Is it locked right out, or?
Yeah, IT went around and said.
This is a veteran.
You can tell me what.
I don't, I don't, seriously, I don't, I don't.
Will you take your top?
Yeah.
This is the best, the best part.
Too much inside, I can't.
They know who that is.
Shouldn't I?
Maybe that's a good idea.
This time, who is the type of thing you give?
Good evening, everybody. Commissioner Amos is here, and here's, and I know Commissioner Crook is here, but we're gonna get started. Good evening, everybody, we're gonna begin, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Evans tells me that Sodas here, participation in government class here, is that you guys in the back?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, well, you're in the front, okay. All right, I want, we need somebody to recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us, and since you're doing this, yes.
Turn your mic on. Thank you, they tell me what to do here. I didn't have my mic on. Can everybody hear me now? All right, my understanding is we have School of the Arts here, and their participation in government class, and what group could be more appropriate to recite the Pledge of Allegiance and participation in government? So they're looking at each other, trying to figure out, okay, who's gonna do it? They're acting like they're really shy. Would someone volunteer, please, go over there to that podium? And we're all gonna follow you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on, let's give them a little bit of encouragement. All right, there you go, he's gonna step up to the plate, all right, all right. If you could just tell us your name, before you begin reciting the pledge, that'd be great, and what grade you're in.
My name is Deanna, and I'm a senior, I'm in 12th grade.
Where are you going to school after you get done with SODA?
I'm actually going to school for cosmetology, the Continental.
All right, let's give her a round of applause.
So you are, you're here now, right? Are you over there now?
No.
Okay, we've got students over there now, okay.
All right, we're ready.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and let's give her another round of applause, we really appreciate that. That is participating in government in a real way. The next item on our agenda is we have to approve the minutes of the meeting from October the 23rd, and our special meeting from October the 30th. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll just, if they would say aye, aye, those minutes have been approved. Now, we are here, that moment in our agenda where we recognize our students in this district and an entire school, just to give you a little background, folks, what we try to do is we alternate every month, one with an I Believe Award, which recognizes an individual student for their own accomplishment, their own progress. These young people are role models, and you see pictures of them, and the Diaz right up front. And then, the next month, in our business meeting, we recognize a whole school with the Yes We Can Award, and that recognizes progress, improvement, and that's what this district is all about. We can't get to a 99% graduation rate tomorrow, but we can show how certain people are becoming the stars that we need them to become, like our school, our number 58 school, World of Inquiry school. So, it's number 25 school that we're recognizing today, do we have a representative for number 25 school?
Yes.
Yes? Come on up. Uh, now, we are here, uh, that moment in our agenda where we recognize, um, our, uh, students in this district and an entire school. Just to give you a little background, folks, what we try to do is we alternate every month. Uh, one with an I Believe Award, which recognizes an individual student for their own accomplishment, their own progress. Uh, these young, uh, people are role models, and you see pictures of them in the DS right up front. Uh, and then, the next month, in our business meeting, we recognize a whole school, uh, with the Yes We Can Award. And that recognizes progress, improvement, uh, and that's what this district is all about. We can't get to a 99% graduation rate tomorrow, but we can show how certain people are becoming the stars that we need them to become, like our, our, uh, school without our, our, um, number 58 school, World of Inquiry School. So, uh, it's number 25 school that we're recognizing today. Do we have a representative for number 25 school? Yes?
Handful.
Now, unfortunately, um, Mary Adams, Commissioner Adams, is probably in transit right now.
She's in transit.
And, uh, she would normally be the person to present this award. How we try to do this is the Board of Education is, we, uh, we represent, we serve as liaisons to certain schools. Each one of us has certain schools assigned to us. Uh, Mary Adams, Commissioner Adams, is assigned to work with and help and support in whatever way she can, number 25 school. Although, they don't need much help. They are really superstars for this district. Um, I can tell you, I think it was just last week, the leadership team met at number 25 school, or a couple of weeks ago, and it was just awesome to see the kind of things that they're doing for our schools. Now, that's just my observation. I wish Mary was here because she could really personalize this. So indulge me as I read to you so that you fully understand what they've been doing at number 25. Uh, we recognize that, uh, school community, uh, last month, we recognized number 25 school with the I Believe Award. Uh, with that honor, we honored, uh, Cadence Pacheco and the school librarian, Ms. Dates. Also, within the past month, we visited the school and received a presentation by Ms. Lazio, the principal, at number 25, and members of her instructional team. During that visit, uh, they spoke about the methods behind their success, particularly in the area of math, as they were highlighted in a recent article by the Democrat Chronicle. Before the school's notoriety and, and, uh, the DNC, um, they were known for their achievement in math. Number 25 school also had a very well-known speech program, uh, speech therapy. It's called Speech Therapy to Encourage Production of Sounds. It's called the STEPS Program. Is that right?
Right.
The program is designed for severely speech impaired students that are at high risk for reading and writing delays, and requires specific modifications for the acquisition of... Help me out here. Phonological skills.
Yes.
Is that right? Did I get that right?
Yeah.
All right. I could go on and on, as I'm sure Mary would, with great things about what's happening at number 25 school. Tonight, we are recognizing Principal Lazio and her team at Nathaniel Hawthorne School 25, for exemplifying the Board of Education's Yes We Can vision by acting as a model in, in the work that they do in the area of both teacher and professional learning, and providing differentiated instruction and support for students as evidenced by number 25's mathematic proficiency scores. Overall, number 25 school gained an average of, an increase of 15% in the overall, in overall school-wide, grades three through six. Mathematics achievement from the 2012, 2013 to 2013, 2014 school years, the highest level of proficiency in the district. Let's give them a round of applause. Again, I'll go back to the personal note, uh, getting off the, the script that I'm sure Mary could have, uh, delivered in a much better, uh, fashion than I have. I, I've been to many leadership meetings. We have them every Tuesday morning now, uh, at 7:30 in the morning, and the Board of Education said, listen, we need to be meeting at the schools and talking to the staff. Uh, and we've had, since we've been doing this since January, probably about, I would say, at least 12 or so meetings at schools, and this meeting, where I listened to what they were doing at the school, was the best education for me in terms of what our staff are doing to improve our district. You won't see it in the headlines at 7:30 in the morning, you wouldn't see any reporter there. What you see is committed, caring, competent, capable professionals. Thank you very much for the work that you do. Before, uh, we, uh, have our principal say something, I just want to read this certificate of recognition. It's called the Yes We Can Award, presented to Nathaniel Hawthorne School 25, presented by the Board of Education, uh, and the Superintendent of Schools, in recognition of significant gains in New York State Mathematical Assessment Proficiency for grades three through six that resulted in achieving the highest level of proficiency in our district. Again, congratulations, number 25. You ruled the Yes We Can.
Thank you very much. What I'm gonna tell you is that we're gonna get 100% next year, because I have a team...
We go.
I have a team who believe in the children, and they do it. They are awesome. And, um, Meredith, Meredith Perez, and Kristen, and Steph, they are the STEPS team. They're awesome. I don't know if you know this about our school, we have over 30% special ed, and these teachers, come on up here. They believe in the children. They are a team that work together, and they do it. They do it every day. And we're gonna do it. We have a great school, a great team. Come say something.
I guess we're gonna have to use, this photographer, photographer's not here. So, we gotta, something I'll figure out. I guess I could just use my cellphone. We gotta take a picture, because what we do is we make sure that folks see every week, uh, every day that they come in this room, the folks who are making a difference in our group. So I need you guys from 23rd, come on over here. Uh, the board's gonna smile right behind you, because we're also very happy about you. All right, we need big smiles, or your candid camera. Melissa's on Facebook. Okay, I got to do a little zoom here. Oh, look, Melissa, I'll smile. Melissa, you're in a great spot. Melissa, where you going?
I want to be...
Oh, you're coming down here, okay. Melissa says, come on down, come on down, guys, you guys. Melissa, watch it, come on, come on, come on. Come on over there, Melissa. Melissa, that's a good idea.
I'll stay right here.
See, there's no smile in the background. Here we go.
Very, well, there you go. That worked, that works.
Does that work?
That works. It's too high.
Will that work right?
Yeah, it works.
Uh, okay, Willie's getting a photography, because we gotta come a little bit closer. Come on, we're family, y'all can do a little tag. Two, three, go. All right, Ray, you got a good job, man.
All right, why is this not... voting? Thank you. It's just barely listed.
All right, I wanna, again, apologize to 25. I wish Mary Adams were here, but we know she's taking her time, driving back safely from Albany. Uh, she really is very close to that school, and she would have done a much better job than I did, but the facts speak for themselves, and, and we're very proud of number 25, no matter how we say it. We're filled with pride. Um, next item on our agenda is speakers addressing an agenda item.
There are none.
There are none. And then, we have, uh, speakers, uh, address, speakers not addressing an agenda item. We have two. Shirley Thompson, hello Shirley, I saw you back there, come on up. Shirley was a former member of the Board of Education. Let's give Shirley a round of applause.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. As I promised, I wanted to come back tonight after addressing you at the October meeting. At that time, I was representing the Gandhi Institute for Nonviolence, and I had been asked by representatives from the Bi-Lingual Council to express to you their interest in resolving their concerns about the needs of their special ed students, about addressing those concerns and working collaboratively with the Board in a nonviolent fashion. Also, as part of my remarks, I stated that the parents had not received a full audience from the Board when they addressed you in October. I had understood that just one Board member had remained, or had been present, had given the parents an audience, and following my remarks, immediately following my remarks last month, I was notified that I had misunderstood, that the full Board had, in fact, listened to the couple of parents that had enough time to speak. And so, I wanted to come back and apologize for my misunderstanding, and retract that, that part of my comments, and to thank you for granting an audience to those parents. It meant a lot to them, and they are, they continue looking to you for support. There has been some movement and some progress made with some of the concerns that exist, and so they still look to you for the support that they and their children need, but I did want to come back and publicly apologize for my misstatement, and to say thank you for the work that you are doing, and to please keep it up.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, the next person, uh, address, not addressing an agenda item is John Gabriel. Mr. Gabriel, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner White, distinguished members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Bivard, um, and members of the school community, my name is John Gabriel. I am the choir director at the School of the Arts, and I have brought my officers with me, Elvis, Tim, Elaine, Nick, and Kailani, and we would like to speak to you very briefly.
We are here tonight to let you know that we are planning to represent SODA in the Rochester City School District at the Heritage Music Festival in Boston next April.
We're trying to raise about $500 per student. On one hand, it sounds like a lot, but on the other hand, it's doable, if everyone helps. We know that you're all active in the community, and if everyone helps, it's...
Come on, you gotta, you gotta...
We are very willing and eager to raise the money. Uh, we're already selling delicious chocolates at our school. As soon as we get the next shipment in, we'll bring a couple of boxes here to central office if anyone's interested, so...
Don't do that, please.
We will be happy to schedule performances, rake leaves, wash our car. There are 50 of us in the choir, and we know that we need to work hard to achieve our goals.
All right, give me your number. I got some leaves that are underneath the snow, so you can snow and rake at the same time.
It is our wish to bring pride and recognition to our school and our district. You all have heard us sing many times already, and you know that we create some beautiful music.
Thank you for your time. We look forward to hearing from you. You can contact us or our teacher, Mr. Gabriel.
Before we leave tonight, we would like to sing our School of the Arts theme song, arranged by one and only John Gabriel. It sums up how we feel about the arts and our school. Thank you for your time and attention.
We are the School of the Arts. We are the School of the Arts. We believe in the power of art to change our schools, to change, to change our schools. We believe in the power of art to change our lives, to change, to change our lives. We believe in the power of art to change our world, to change our world. We are the School of the Arts. We are the School of the Arts.
Wow. Yeah.
Mr. Gabriel, would you just send us, um, information on, um, uh, on the Boston trip? Uh, I think I have some friends that can support this endeavor, so if you could just send it to our email, um, addresses...
Commissioner, it would be my pleasure. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If, if I may, Elvis, raise your hand. You will be seeing Elvis on TV. He's been selected as a Channel 8 Student Artistic Scholar, so he's gonna be on, um, on TV representing our school district.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Um, the, one young lady said, uh, we want to bring pride and recognition to the district. You already have, young people, you already have, so thank you very much. Let's give them another round of applause. Uh, that takes us to the Superintendent's Report. Uh, we have Dr. Vargas. Wait, wait a second, it's not Dr. Vargas, it's Deputy Superintendent.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here tonight, representing Dr. Vargas. He is on his way back from Albany with Commissioner Adams, and as we all know, due to weather, they are taking their time, and they, we hope that they arrive safely. So it is my honor to present on our Summer Learning 2014. So a district priority and a superintendent's priority has been more and improved learning time, and this translated into much work last summer in order to improve our summer programs. So we wanted more and better learning during the year, we wanted more and better summer programs for our students. So tonight, we are going to talk about what the focus was, and then we're going to give you the outcomes. So for more and better, um, summer learning, we, in June, we focused on these targets. So we tracked outcomes for all summer, summer programs, and we set a goal of 75% of our K-3 participants maintaining or increasing reading this summer, because that is our district focus, and we know that summer learning loss is pervasive, and we wanted to find a way to create a program to stop it. We said we'd monitor attendance closely, we said we wanted to increase our special education programming, we knew that our special education students were not participating at the level that we had desired, so we wanted to see that increase, and we said we also want this to be about enrichment, so we wanted more enrichment opportunities than ever before. Now, there had been 20 partnership programs serving more than 1,000 students, and we have 550 4th graders enrolled in the Summer Scholars Program funded by the Wallace Foundation. So we, we analyzed these targets, we took, we tracked this data, and tonight, we are going to report on the outcomes. We do want to do a special thank you and shout out to Tim and Jing for correlating all this data analysis for us. So here we go. Here's an overview of the results. The good news, there was more participation in summer learning programs than ever before. This is record participation from our students, 10,000 students participated in 50-plus summer programs. I think that's an awesome statistic. And we did what we said we were going to do. Our target was 75%, 74% of K-3 students maintained or increased their reading level. Now, we know that that is one of the hardest statistics to crack. We know that vocabulary comes into play, reading comes into play, academic vocabulary. So we're very happy with that statistic, and look at this, 79% of our students maintained or increased in math. We surpassed our goal for serving students with disabilities and our English language learners, so we're very happy to report 24% of our students with disabilities participated in our summer programs. That's a significant increase over what we've had before, and 13% of our English language learners. We use project management to, we've documented the work, and we're going to use that platform to continuously improve. So these outcomes have been analyzed, and we've already begun planning to learn from these outcomes. I've participated in two meetings, um, already on summer learning for next year, so we're really excited and optimistic about moving forward with this successful program. Where we want to improve, and where we found that we needed some work, we have put a focus on attendance in this district, and I know many people, today was a truce and sea blitz, we really putting boots on the ground, getting out, knocking on doors, saying you need to come to school to learn. We need to have that same intensity and focus this summer, because overall, when we analyzed our attendance, we only had 60% of students attending 50% or more of our programs. So we want to, that, that is a focus, and we also saw that our program measures were not consistent across all of our summer programs. So we want to learn from our, our standards of excellence, our programs that really had excellent outcomes, and we want to say, what did they do? How can we learn? And how can we spread that consistency across the district? So here are some specific slides. This is a lot of data, because I know you all liked it, and I'm really wishing that Commissioner Adams was here, because I know she really loves the data. I'm gonna go quickly through this, but you have all this, and we'll, we'll make sure that you have all of this. Our Innovation Greenhouse, shout out to Dr. Giomartino for his strong leadership with this. Um, this was K-3, uh, students at five schools, very strong attendance here, and look at these outcomes. If you can see the screen, you've really got to look at these statistics. Plus 36%, plus 50% growth, plus 25%, plus 16%. This is amazing, and that's for ELA in math, plus 21% in different benchmarks, plus 9%, plus 22%. These are amazing outcomes, so, so positive, um, and this is something that we really are going to try to expand to additional schools next summer. Our Summer Scholars Program is our next piece of data. This is our Wallace Program, and in just a few minutes, we do have some video from this program, and you can hear, uh, from our Summer Scholars. We want to point out that the math growth for students with disabilities was significantly higher than general education, and we're very pleased to be partnering with Wallace Foundation. Um, we, we have a team going to meet with them, um, next month, and they have pledged two more years of funding to help us expand our summer enrichment programs for the future. So this example in this data that we're showing you is just one example of a pre and post-test results, um, the, the fractions. So our students improved 65% in their performance on fractions, and you know that's a foundational skill. Um, and once you get fractions, you can really build those higher math concepts, so very proud of this program. Our next stat is for our extended school year for students with disabilities. We want to thank Chris Sariano for his exceptional hard work, and the great thing about this is attendance overall was somewhat of... is attendance overall was somewhat of a concern, but our students with disabilities had great attendance, and they showed great results. So 98% of our students with disabilities met or exceeded their IEP goals. So if you can see this chart, you'll see that 21% exceeded their IEP goals, 77% maintained, and that is exceptional for our students with disabilities. So we wanted to show you another chart that we're using for students with disabilities, because now we're drilling down into the data by subgroup, and this is something that can inform our work all year long. We can share this with our teachers and really see what has the highest impact and the highest leverage for improvement with this population. And then we're going to show you some statistics on our Academic Intervention Services. We have math and ELA results here. On the left, you see ELA, and you see the blue is our Innovation Greenhouse. The orange is our AIS programs, and you can see that all grades show significant academic growth, especially in our math with the AIS population. Then we go to our enrichment, our summer enrichment programs. This is a six-week program, wonderful attendance. It's based on a national model, and the great thing about this is that we have community partners. So we wanted to thank our partners, the Harley School, Allendale School, SUNY Brockport, University of Rochester, and MCC that hosted our students. Our math scores are 12 points higher for repeat attendees compared to nonparticipants, and here's the thing that translates into all-year-long school year attendance is 4% higher compared to nonparticipants. So it shows when students are engaged and active in wonderful enrichment activities, they like school better, they attend more, and they achieve at higher rates. So this last piece of data, this last celebration, is particularly close to my heart. Having joined the district in August, I did get to participate in this celebration, and this is about our summer school program. So for our secondary scholars, we had 258 August graduates. That is a district record. We have shared that before. Welcome, Commissioner Adams. Just want to say, welcome back. 73%, pretty good attendance, attended at least 50% of the time. Now, here's something that we did differently. We really focused on a strategy to expand our online credit recovery. So if you just take a look at what we have here, 123 course completions happened through online credit recovery during our summer program. Now, if you compare that, that we only had approximately 300 completions in the last two full school years, you just see that that is an incredibly successful statistic. What did that do for our graduation rate? Well, here we go. The graduation rates, we overall projected an increase of 2.9%. So if you look at the 2014 graduation rate, the 2010 cohort, all the way to the right, you're going to see a statistics that you haven't seen since 2010. You're going to see 51%. Now, we had projected 50.5% over the summer, and as we've analyzed students and really dug into the data and made sure we accounted for every student, we are now projecting 51% with that August graduation rate. So that's a real celebration. And I do want to note that in 2010, that 51% graduation was with different rules. That's when a local diploma was still available. That's when you didn't have to pass five regents. So to get back to that rate with a more rigorous standard is really an accomplishment for the district. So I think we want to take the lessons that we learned with online credit recovery, with strategic pre-monitoring, pre-registering students, and just the hard work that we've learned from this data to the future, so we can really see that graduation rate increase. So here's just another fun thing. It is the holiday season, and we are so proud to tell you that we have 40,000 free books coming to our kids for the holidays. We want to give a shout out to Amy Rehneer from the RTA. Every time I see Amy, she's handing out pamphlets. She's reminding teachers, "Did you sign up for the free book distribution? Have we got to the right level so we can give these books out?" So if you want to be there Saturday, December 13th, at School Number 6 in the morning, we will be distributing 40,000 books for our RCSD students. Very proud to announce that, and it's very fun to do this report. So I've gone over the data quickly. We know that we can spend more time with it. We are learning from it. We are already using it to plan for next year, but we thought beyond the data that we wanted you to hear from our scholars. So we're going to show you a short video, and you're going to meet our summer scholars up close and personal and see the impact that this work has had on their lives.
I think that the Wallace Program has been a godsend to the Rochester City School kids because it's giving them the ability to have experiences that they would not have ever had the opportunity to have. They have programs where they can go rock climbing, and they can go dancing, and they can go swimming, and things that they would never... You know, through no fault of Rochester City School District, there's just no funding for that kind of a program, especially, you know, with as many children as we service, and they're being given this just amazing opportunity that's been given to us by Wallace, and I think these kids are just... I think that we're going to see a big difference in them throughout the rest of their lives, I'm hoping, because, you know, they're going to have these experiences. They're going to have these places that they've been, that, you know, we always complain as teachers that these kids don't have the experiences that we'd like them to have, and they get them. And sometimes, you know, kids just don't... In the city, just don't have those. And for them to be able to come in here, you know, in the knights in shining armor and come in and offer these things to our kids is wonderful, and I think our kids are just so much better off in the long run for it. And I think that, you know, they might not see it now, but I think someday, they're going to say, "Wow, that I was given an opportunity that I wish everybody could get, and I wish everybody, myself, could get these opportunities."
Where I see this program is, is these kids walk away with some confidence, and confidence ultimately will take you wherever you need to go. You may not be the best math student, but if you have gotten a sense of self, you know that maybe I'm not going to get it on the first try, but I can get there.
When you go to your enrichments, like rock climbing, swimming, or your workshop and other stuff, you think, "I can't do this. I can't do this. I'm going to use my back out now." But then, when you try it once, you say, "Oh, I actually can do this," and you're not afraid to try it anymore.
It helps us a lot, so like, when we're doing a test and stuff, we could remember, like, what to do and what to figure out instead of just putting your head down and not trying.
They helped me have a different way to answer questions, how to use a number bond for math.
I didn't really like reading because it was kind of boring. But when I started reading really fun books, I started to like it.
Kids are going back home with a sense of accomplishment, a smile on their face, and just excited to come to school, which you don't really see a lot during the school year or during other summer programs.
When I first came here at Summer Scholars, it was pretty hard for me, because it was pretty hard for me, because I didn't really know a lot of stuff. Like, when I was in my other school, I wasn't really smart as the other kids, so I had a lot of struggling time. I couldn't read as... I couldn't read at the high grade most of the time. I couldn't do math a lot. I couldn't do dividing. I didn't know how to do it, and multiplication, not really good at it. But when I came here, I'm getting it now. I'm like, I'm doing it. I can't believe I'm doing it. I told my mom about it. She was like, "Oh, my gosh, I'm so proud of you, and I love this. I love it here. It's so awesome."
The Rochester Summer Scholars Program has created a second home for these students. It's created a family for the past two years that we've been able to be together. We are family. We sense each other's needs, each other's wants. We support each other. Not only the staff has been wonderful, but the staff has been so supportive for these students to meet their needs emotionally, academically. Each time we get together, we're better than we were before.
There's nothing out there like this, and I think this is beneficial to the school district and the students in the school district. And for the families to take advantage of this, it's the best option for them.
Rochester Summer Scholars is fun because we get to learn ecosystems, ELA in math, and at the end of the day, we get to eat, like, snack and stuff.
Education is like a weapon that we could use to change the world, and Rochester Summer Scholars Program really proves that.
It's making a difference for our kids, and that's the best part of Summer Scholars.
And when I'm in the fifth grade, my teacher would be like, "How did you get that smart? And how did you know all your math facts?" And I would say, "It's just because of Summer Scholars."
So the Summer Scholars Program makes me excited, because there's something inside my heart that every time I come here, well, it makes me feel like I'm home.
If Summer Scholars School was in my school, I'd be happy. I want to go there Saturdays, Sundays, holidays, weekend, breaks, all the stuff that we don't go to school. I'd be so happy. My brain would be smiling.
And that ends my report.
Well, that's a hard report to follow. You know, my brain will be smiling. Oh, my goodness. Education is a weapon? I want to come back to school again? That's... Let's give them another round of applause. You know, we don't talk enough about the good things that happen in this district and the faces of kids that we are able to help smile and change their life, so thank you to... I assume, Chip, you had something to do with that?
Probably not.
But to Chip and to everyone who I don't know that participated in that video, including the parents that probably signed waivers, that was a wonderful video, and thank you. We got to figure out a way to share that with other people, so again, nice shot. All right.
I have questions on the report.
Yes, go ahead.
I see that we have... We had a summer attendance of 50% or higher, and we were able to get these results. What are we going to do to inform our parents and to inform our community that if we can move this to more than 50%, that we will see even greater results? How are you in the Communications Department getting this message out? The fact that we got these kinds of results at at least 50%, we need to increase this. How do we ensure that we have our students attending summer school at a higher rate, higher than 50%?
Some of the things we learned last year, and I wasn't here in the spring, I've just learned these lessons from the team, that really, the communication went out earlier, and it went out in multiple venues. And students, when they preregister and when they commit to summer school early, to a summer program early, and it has a good connotation, so as we heard our students say, you know, it isn't sort of the kill-and-drill kind of thing that maybe I remember if, you know, in my era when there was summer school. It's exciting, it's engaging, it's, you know, growing your mind and your skills. Who wouldn't want that?
Well, that's the wrong answer. Let me just say it again.
Okay.
We have at least 50% of our students who are attending summer school.
Okay.
How do we communicate to families that we have 50% of our students
Okay.
coming to summer school? If we can get your child to come more than 50%, the numbers for K through 8 would go up even higher.
Right.
That's the information that we need to communicate. So I guess the question is, is it going to be... Is that kind of information going to be communicated so that we... The community is informed of this so that we can increase those numbers? This is the only way, in my mind, that we're going to be able to have a cooperative community and parents if they know the data. And we're not good at communicating with parents and the community about the data itself. Is that a possible strategy? I know that that's something on the Community Intergovernmental Relations Committee we're going to be discussing in terms of a strategy, but how do we get the fact... To encourage them, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
And I completely agree, Commissioner. I think until this year, we didn't have the data, so now we've... Last year, we were late in communicating. We're going to be much earlier this year. The whole process is earlier, including the parent communication part. And then, last year, we said, "You should do this because it's good for your child." But now you can say, "You can do this, it's good for your child," and we can prove it's good for your child, because this is what happened to kids when they...
So 50% of the students are coming... If the students are coming at least 50% of the time, we could say to them that we can increase ELA scores and math scores. Is that... Can we communicate that way intelligently?
I think so. I think there's two messages there. 50% isn't enough. I mean, the more your child attends, the better you're going to do when you really get down on the data. Tim Schmatt's here, who's been doing all the analysis on it. So everyone should attend all the time, but if you get past that 50% threshold, you're going to see absolute academic growth for your child.
All right, thank you. Then I have another question with regard to... I was... We had the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee on Tuesday, and I saw... This actually was in the Superintendent's Action Plan, but it just... I was able to ask questions about it. I don't know why it jumped out at me at the meeting. But when I looked at the data in the Superintendent's Action Plan, in 2017, 18, we're projecting that 70% of our students are going to graduate, but those who are going to be college-ready are only at 30%. And I don't understand the difference there. And I guess the question becomes also, if we're doing this kind of work in the summer, is this worth it if we're going to only have a projected college readiness for our students at 30%? When the graduation rate is 70... I don't understand the difference. Now, at that committee, they were telling me, "Well, that's a 600% increase. I don't give a damn about that. The numbers are not... 30% with all of this money? How do we reconcile 70% graduation rate in 2017, 18, and a 30... Only a 30% college readiness?"
That is a projected percentage, and it's based on the definition, as Vice President Elliott from New York State, on proficiency. You have to score two things, 75 on your English regents and an 80 on your math regents in order to be in that stat of what the state is saying is college-ready. I think it's really important for Rochester City Schools to define what we mean for our students by college-ready. Post-secondary credits accumulated in high school. There could be many indicators. Credits accumulated, 8th grade credits accumulated in 9th grade, to prepare you to start taking post-secondary credits in high school. We have a focus right now, which can change that statistic, Vice President. We have a linked learning focus. We have a career pathway focus. We have things that we are in formation right now to do to have our kids experience that world of college, world of post-secondary ed while they're with us in our schools. So that is a projection, and I agree with you. It is too low for our students.
And what I was really disturbed about and offended about, see, that... To have those kinds of responses, the people who were at that room that night, when they go back to their homes in the suburbs, they will not accept that out there in the suburbs. And we should not have to accept it here with our students.
I agree.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm glad, Adele, that you identified the very specific definition of New York State... The Commission of Education has perpetuated this notion of college-ready being the product of two regents' proficiency scores. But the whole thing is a contradiction, because the concept of a regent's exam, passing five regents' exams by the state's definition, is career and college-ready. Any other definition... And what I'm sorry about is that we are buying into
Yes.
any other definition. But any other definition than that is an abrogation of the very definition of a regent's exam, and we should not accept it. The fact is, this number came out of a very poorly-designed study in New York City that suggested that the entire graduating population of New York City was only 5% college-ready. And then, what they did was sort of used those same numbers and projected across the entire state something like 5% or 7% college-ready. That's in the suburbs too, Commissioner Elliott. I want you to know. That's in the suburbs too. The notion that the entire state is only 5% college-ready, city, suburbs, rural, everywhere, we should not be accepting that number because it's a false definition of success, and it sets us all up to believe that our children are failing, when that's not true. The fact that they're graduating by New York State standards, which the state has said are the definition of college and career-ready, we should not be accepting any other definition.
Let's not have a debate, but Vice President Elliott, were you... were you going to say something?
Yeah, not to, not to Commissioner Powell, but just to say that education for black students is equalizer. It is the great equalizer. And we just heard that child say that it is a weapon. And if we in this district don't look at it as a weapon to be able to ensure that the people who have not can have, then we're doing them a disservice. But I appreciate your remarks, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you.
Anything further?
No, I just want to say, and I said this last, over the last couple of years that we've had summer learning, that I love the fact that we're getting to the, that I hope that we can get to the, continue to get to the case where we'll have as many kids in school over the summer as we do during the school year. And I think the difference is, the odd thing is, back in the day, when you had to go to summer school, it was like a bad, like it was like a bad thing. Like, "You going to summer school? What?" I mean, in my house, summer school was, listen, you're going to the museum, you're going to, you're going to whatever. You were at the summer school, you'd be in trouble. But we flipped that to show that now summer school has become fun for kids. And kids actually now are looking more, more forward to summer school in the summer than they are during the school year because it's just, it's become not just the sit and get, but we've integrated so many activities, as you saw in the video, the swimming, the rock climbing, all those things in the summer. And somehow, we have to find a way to do that during the school year. I know it's a little bit more difficult. But if we could do that during the school year too, I think you'd see even better results. I mean, there is no question that you can, you can stem the summer learning loss. Now we have data that shows it when you continue to do that. I mean, it's a big deal, particularly in the urban environment, when they have a two- to three-month gap and then come back in September and you expect them to be where they, where they left off. So I always make no apologies for supporting the budget when we continue to invest in summer. I know some people say, "Oh, why, why are you spending money in the summer?" For these types of programs, it's different than just traditional summer school that people thought about when, when it was when I was in school and when others were in school. This really takes it to the next level when you're really integrating arts and athletics and the things that you really don't think about when you think about the traditional summer school. So I'm glad that we're doing that, and I hope we continue to do that this coming budget, budget season. And the other point, now conclude by saying, is that we're leveraging other dollars. You know, this is not just district money. Obviously, we want to put some skin in the game. But the more, I think, that we can leverage foundations and other folks, it shows, it shows that investment. And if we're showing results, it makes people understand why it's important that we invest in it.
All right, let's move on to standing committee reports. We'll start with our student report. Unique.
Hello, everyone. At the previous, can everyone hear me? All right. At the previous meeting, I mentioned that the Student Leadership Congress was reviewing Vargas's action plan. We, I've come back to say that we have reviewed it, and we agree with it very thoroughly, and we support his actions. Furthermore, I want to say that something he mentioned was that career, that something that was also mentioned at our last meeting that happened to be in his action plan was for career-based activities for students and being that a lot of jobs will be opening in areas that don't necessarily require degrees. And some of the students at the board believe that they would like to have classes that focus more on degrees, or degrees in areas of careers that were, that students who knew what they wanted to go towards could attend. Furthermore, was, we talked about having a development of a variety of academic programs that had schools working with their students and not necessarily working on their students by having peer mediations and teen courts. We already have a teen court in the school district. I was thinking more of a local version, making sure that students felt like they were involved in their education more frequently than they are currently. Furthermore, along with that, speaking on the subject of community, to develop more thorough community partners, a lot of schools have these partners. We're hoping that we could work on developing them on a larger scale to make sure that every school has a very thorough network and web of people outside that invest inside of them. Also, something else we said was that we wanted to work on putting out stronger efforts towards highlighting both the good in schools and the opportunities for students. I remember at the last board meeting, we were talking about, just out of curiosity, about schools and what a few of the juniors wanted to do for college. And one of them said, "Oh, I would like to go to RIT, but I can't afford it." And I was telling him about the Rochester Promise Program and the fact that a few local colleges have that opportunity. And the fact that we have students that don't know about that is honestly unacceptable. It's a very, it's an incredible opportunity. And if you look at the, the statistics from the last, the last few Rochester Promise programs, like at RIT, they've actually been a lot, they've been going down. And it's unfortunate. We need to make sure that people are aware of these so they can use these benefits. Also, it was mentioned last, last board meeting that I was going to bring up the, the board meetings. They were to be defined because the ones mentioned on the school calendars were incorrect. I can say that we now have those board meetings defined, and you can expect robocalls at home for meetings. And if you are a student who would like to be involved or a parent who has a student that would like to be involved, we invite you to our next meeting, which is on December 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Unique. Unfortunately, Makita is in transit from Albany, New York. She was the head of our Parent Advisory Council, so there is no PAC report tonight. Let's begin with our standing committee reports.
President White?
Yes.
Can I just say that she was, she was representing the parent voice very, very well this week, these past two days?
Thank you.
On school climate issues, work in Albany.
Yep. And I hope you'll give us a brief later on a report about what was going on in Albany. Okay. All right, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. Finance Committee met on November 13th, Thursday. We, you'll find the October financial reports on your board docs. Committee did recommend approval of those financial reports, and I make a motion to that effect.
Do a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Secondly, we took up the Quarterly Student Activity Funds Report and recommend its acceptance. And I move that at this time.
There's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you. We had a rather slim agenda, resolutions 310 through 313, which amount to two procurement and supply resolutions, one request for educational facilities, bonding for CIP, and one additional resolution. All of those passed through the committee with our approval. Resolutions 310 through 313. Our next Finance Committee meeting is Thursday, October 11th at 5:30 PM. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Excellence in Student Achievement Committee met on Tuesday, November 18th, 2014. The ESA Committee received a presentation from the Administration of the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan, AKA the DCEP, and the School Comprehensive Education Plan, AKA the SCEP, for Schools 8, 9, 22, and 34. The committee reviewed the plans and asked the following questions and comments about the plan. How would administration would ensure that the plans were implemented with fidelity? Request to have principals present at meetings when this SCEP's plans are presented. And also, Commissioner Elliott made the recommendation that PAC, PARIT council representatives be involved in review of SCEPs going forward. The DCEP and SCEPs were provided to the full board for review and are part of Resolution 2014-15-320 for consideration tonight. I would point out, too, one of the things that came out of our schools, as we talk about replicating schools that work, a lot of folks may not know this, and this is where we can do a better job of communicating. School number eight is an exponential learning school. So we have three exponential learning schools in our district, ladies and gentlemen, if you don't know that. School 10, School 58, and School 8. And that's important to note because there are programs that have a track record of success. And hopefully, at School 8, this is new for them, get their C legs and really start trying to expand their exponential learning model that they can have some of the same success that School 58 and 10, 10 has. They have a new principal over there. So it's my hope to really see some success at 8 with their EL model going forward. Mr. President, the next meeting of the ESA Committee will be Tuesday, December 9th, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Vice President Elliott?
Mr. President, the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee hosted a legislative breakfast on November 15th. It was attended by approximately, I think it was more, 30 attendees for the legislative breakfast, including representatives from the Governor's Office, representatives from Senator Gillibrand's office, Congresswoman Slott's office, various state representatives. Assemblyman Gant was there, Senator Joe Robach. Also, Senator, Assemblyman Harry Bronson was represented. Assemblyman Morelli's office was represented, as well as members of City Council, Vice President Dana Miller. And I think that I've covered most of them. We talked about our agenda. I won't get into that. But I would say that we had a presentation by Alan Williams, who's Director of Special Projects with the City of Rochester, who gave us a presentation on the Mayor's Early Childhood Education Initiative. And it appears as if, and this is not, we haven't discussed this at this point, but it seems as if, if we're going to have impact. And I know that the superintendent is focused on early childhood literacy. And the mayor is focusing on early learning. I think that it appears that the, the collaborative response is to be to focus in on early, early learning. And so I'm going to be interested in talking more about that with the, with City Council. Oh, and I forgot to tell, say that City, County Legislature was represented as well by legislator Kaylee, Josh, and I can't think of his last name. But the, the county was represented as well. And so I want to thank Council, Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Evans for attending. It was well, it really was a rich conversation. Additionally, we had Tom Richards, who chairs the Facilities Modernization Project, to give us an update on where we are in terms of our schools. And he talked about, in addition to the completion of Phase 1, also what's to, the process, the progress for Phase 2. And we're waiting now for, the bill is on the Governor's desk, and we're waiting for that to get approved so that we can start our next phase of our school renovation project. So we had a, an amazing breakfast, legislative breakfast. And I'll also say to my colleagues here that one of the statements that was made by Assemblyman David Gant was, is that we need to come with a unified message. I think that that would be most effective if we were able to come with the message at Representative Board. And also, you know, I said to the colleagues that, you know, I think that from the board's point, as, you know, Commissioner Adams has went to Albany, many more of us need to begin to travel to Albany. And that's one of the things that the Committee of Intergovernmental Relations is preparing to do, to take more trips to Albany so that, so that the real, and so that the real, so that we get a real understanding, complete understanding of the needs of our children, what they go through in an urban environment. And so I'm looking forward to taking those trips in next year. And so the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee will not meet again until January 13th. And that concludes my report. Mr. President.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy Committee met on November 13th. We ran through a number of different policies. First one, we talked about student records and privacy. We had a bit of a discussion about what that means and also, more importantly, what the impact of providing information and data about our students to the state and to other third parties. And as a result of the conversation, we've decided to move that to our December agenda. And I know Commissioner Adams was also very interested in working with, working with the Policy Committee on that part as well. So we're hoping that she's able to attend that meeting as well. We also had a report on deliverables. Kudos to the staff. We are getting copies of the, of the reports that they're submitting. They're coming through the Policy Committee first. And we've got about 60% done. We're still working on several others. But these are the, these are the reports that come to the full board on the kinds of things that are regulated in terms of year-end reports, on things like small schools, school improvement plans, instruction goals, daycare policies, and those kinds of things. We, in terms of new business, we have a, Mr. Coto, who was here this evening, was also at the Policy Committee talking about our concussion management policy. We have done a tremendous amount of work. The staff has to put together a really comprehensive concussion management policy and set of protocols for our students. As you know, this is one of the biggest concerns among sports, especially our young children's, our young brains, and the kinds of things that happen to them on the field. And we want to make sure that we are up to date and at cutting edge in terms of how do we deal with these, with these issues. Just a piece of information that I thought was fascinating was that a lot of the concussions that our staff deals with doesn't come from our fields or doesn't come from our sports. They deal with a lot of concussions coming from home into our, into our classrooms. So I thought that was fascinating. So there's some work being done in terms of teaching staff on what concussion is and the kind of impact that might have on a child. So kudos to Mr. Coto and his staff. They've done a great job of putting that together. Mr. Smith also was at the part of the Policy Committee meeting, and we talked about the professional service contracting. There is a small change to that. That policy is, can be submitted to you as an information item. It's on board docs, so you can take a look at it. And basically, it just allows some flexibility with regard to being able to provide five years or the three-to-five-year kind of terms so that we're not locked in. And it gives us some flexibility with regard to renegotiating contracts. It also helps contractors to be able to do their planning forward so that they can see that they're going to be outgoing three to five years as opposed to being locked into three years. So you can read that, read through that as well. General Counsel also presented a replacement of board policy, number 1510, which complies with the, it's a complaint form that accompanies 1510R. And basically, it's an age-appropriate complaint process indicating we have, for our students, provide them a more friendly version. There were a lot of questions about this, and we've tabled that discussion as well for our December meeting. And our next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled to be December the 11th. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Campos?
Yes, the Governance Committee, we met on November 13th. We discussed the Superintendent Evaluation Process and Performance Objectives, the board's bylaws, as well as board staff evaluation. So in front of us, we have the Superintendent's Evaluation Tool and the Performance, Performance Objectives. And we recommended that the evaluation tool is reviewed, be advanced to the full board. It's been advanced before. You've seen it pretty much ever since September. We haven't changed it. We wanted to keep it consistent. But at this point, I'm requesting that the tool be accepted by the board. So I'd ask for a motion.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Powell, There's been a motion by Commissioner Powell, seconded by Vice President Elliott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Great. And then we talked about looking at the Board's Bylaws in our December meeting. I think everyone received the email, looking at different ways that we can be more effective as a governing body. So it's really going to be a brainstorming session, so I know that Vice President Elliott sent some ideas. So anything that you can think of, that you'd like to be part of it, would be great. And then, as well as, it is time for our staff's annual evaluations, and we all should have received those via email, and if we can have those completed by December 19th, and sent to Jackie. And then one point, we will be meeting on December 11th, and one point of personal privilege, is I always like to talk about how Rafa's doing in school, and what he's been saying, because he loves school at School 23. He now knows his first sight word list. And every day, when I ask him, "Hey, Rafa, how was school today?", and I don't know where he came up with this, he says, "It was a blast, mommy." You know, so the fact that a kindergartner is loving learning, knows his sight words, knows how to count one to 100, and this is all between September and November, this kid is learning, and he's in a great classroom. So I, and it's in the Rochester City School District, and I'm proud to say that. So I just always like to bring positive stories, they're great as a parent. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Commissioner Adams?
The Audit Committee did not meet during the month of November. However, tonight, the Board will receive the draft, and you should have the draft Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR, for Board Review and Comment. The draft CAFR will also be available in Board Docs. All questions and/or comments should be forwarded to the Auditor General by Wednesday, November 26th. So that's coming up pretty soon, Wednesday, November 26th, if you could get questions to the Auditor General. The next Audit Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 2nd, at 5:30 PM. The entire Board is invited to attend. We will be meeting with Fried Maxick, the External Auditor, to review the results of the financial audit for the year ended June 30th, 2014. That concludes my report. And just a couple of words on, so just by way of brief background, in our commitment and efforts to try to address school climate safety issues, and to try to move away from exclusionary discipline policies, and toward more inclusive policies, where we maximize instructional time, and also engage, you know, our students more effectively than we currently do, there's, there's a really good source of support for school districts in New York State, and that is the permanent, I always, it's a long title. It's known as the Kay Commission, after Judge Judith Kay, who was a former Chief Justice in New York State, who has a tremendous commitment to juvenile justice, and keeping students in school, and away from the court system and the criminal system. It's the Permanent Judicial Commission on Juvenile Justice, I believe, or Child Justice. In any case, they have been doing really strong work statewide, including a series of summits over the past couple of, past year and a half or so. There was one in our region in the spring, that was really well-attended by people from the district, looking at multidisciplinary approaches to addressing these problems, and really bringing together a broad set of stakeholders, from students who have been suspended, to, you know, the highest-level judges, and everyone in between, from the education, the court system, the probation system, the justice system. Important resources for us. Earlier this year, there was a joint leadership summit in Washington, between the Department of Justice and the Department of Education, in which state teams were assembled and attended to try to see how we can bring back to our districts better ways of implementing the important official guidance that recently came out over the past year, again, regarding exclusionary discipline, and how to move away from it. And I attended that, and that was, again, with strong support from the Kay Commission. And then last week, there was a two-day workshop involving specifics around trying to avoid the court system, court referrals, and really trying to build information sharing about our students, kind of what the Three on Three on Three Committee has been trying to do, and prioritizing, in terms of having a really community-wide approach to supporting students and keeping them in school. And then yesterday and today, there was another specific workshop. So you can see they're advancing toward more specific, intense approaches to each of the different areas that it will take tackling. And so these past two days were specifically around school climate. How do we build better school climate and culture in actual school buildings? And looking at how do you know, well, how do you vision what a good school climate would look like, and then how do you measure it, and those kinds of things. And the superintendent and I were there, along with Makita Solone, who's still traveling, and wasn't able to give the parent presentation, but as I said, she did great representation of a parent voice. We also had the Director of Social Work and Community Representation, from Rosemary Rivera, who's very involved in the community task force that's been recently formed, to help us with these issues. So it was very productive work, and I was glad to be able to attend and contribute.
Vice President Elliott?
Yeah, just a point of person privilege, just to piggyback on what Commissioner Adams said, I also attended the community meeting on school climate, that was a week or so ago, or maybe a couple of weeks ago, that's tackling this whole issue around school climate. And I also attended the Parent Advisory Council meeting, and I just want to say, of the great work that the Parent Council is doing, and we just need to involve them more in the decisions of our, our district. And so I take on the role of advocating for them to be even more involved in the work of this, of this district. I don't want them to be seen as an appendage. They are, in fact, our parents, and representing the parents, and we need to involve them in all of the decisions that are made within our district. And also attended some leadership meetings as well, so that's it, Mr. President.
Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, I've got an alibi. Regarding New York State School Board Association business, which I failed to mention while I had the mic, you may have seen an email circulated, widely circulated, the subject line just says, "We won." It's a little overstated, but what it referred to is, you're aware that Michael Rebel is the lead lawyer in the Campaign for Educational Equity lawsuit. The state asked the court to dismiss that lawsuit on the grounds of lack of legal merit, and the courts soundly trounced the state in that, in their argument, essentially said that Michael Rebel's position, the educational, the constitutional rights of children were being abrogated by the lack of funding. Essentially, the courts supported Michael Rebel and his right to his day in court, on every count. The, the problem that represents is, the state has shown its inclination to fight through every legal means, including the most minor, to block the advancement of this lawsuit. It's very, very much like what Pataki put us through the first 12 years. Our only hope is that the courts will see that past track record, and, and decide to expedite the proceedings, so that we don't have to endure another 12 years, like we did for CFE. But we did win the first round, and the New York State School Board Association is a plaintiff in that, which means that we, by extension, all of the, all of the member districts in NISBA are invested in, in that outcome. Thank you for your time.
Sure.
Pressman White?
Yes.
I just want to say how much I appreciate Commissioner Powell's work on this, you know, in terms of writing essays, and educating the community, and serving through NISBA and other, other means. So thank you for your sustained work on that.
Absolutely. Now we'll conclude with the President's report. I have made an effort, as you all know, perhaps it's a bit troublesome for you all at times, to keep in touch via email and by phone. Commissioner, Vice President Elliott and I even meet at McDonald's, and have our conversations. I speak to each and every one of you pretty regularly, so I won't give a traditional President's report. I want to focus, since next week is Thanksgiving, I want to focus my, I will attempt to be brief, my brief President's report on things that I am thankful for. I will begin with this little note card, these little artsy things that we get. It's like somebody anonymously plants these things on our desks, and they are wonderful artists quite often. This little note that we got with these, the things that we got today, says, "Made especially for you by the sixth grade, Zentable Designs, the Children's School." That's Number 15. The art teacher there is Regina Neary. I want to thank the Children's School, and Number, and Regina Neary. We are thankful that you all think of us. Almost every Board meeting, we have these up here, and they're really sweet. We, you know, we run out of office space to put them. But I'm very thankful that people are thinking of us, because a lot of us do spend time thinking about them. I am also thankful for the world of inquiry. Oh, man, what a blessing to see those young kids get that far. Think about this. Their journey was further than five hours away in Middleton. The journey for many of these kids took them across countries and difficulties that we only have nightmares about. So I am very thankful that I, and humbled, that I could represent my friends and colleagues up here, in their journey to a great championship run, and to see the excitement on these kids' faces, as they went up against children, men, these guys were twice their size, if you'd seen it. It just, it was miraculous that our young men were able to do so well. So I'm very thankful, and very honored to, not every Board member can make that journey. We all are very busy, we have complicated lives, and I feel honored that I was able to represent my colleagues, who have other obligations. And you just really, people talk about what salary we make as Board members, well, the commercial, as the commercial goes, it was absolutely priceless to go to Hamburg, and then to Middleton, and see these young boys win. So that was my blessing, my gift. The other thing I'm thankful for, it happens to be on the agenda, that the Bente contract was resolved. I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful that the Bente leadership, and Dr. Vargas and his team, were able to resolve that, because it wasn't always clear that that was going to be resolved. And so I am, I think I can say this on behalf of the Board, we haven't voted on it yet, but we are very thankful that that was resolved. I want to thank, I want to let Dr. Vargas and his team know that I am thankful, and I believe the Board is too, for their efforts that they have made in extended and expanded learning opportunities for our kids, the focus that they have brought to attendance. I am thankful for that, and I want them to know that. I am also, this is not a great surprise, Angel, I am very thankful, and feeling very blessed, long before I get the turkey, for the University of Rochester and East High School, the staff at East High School. We should all be very thankful, and feel very blessed, that we are doing something that no one has done in the state of New York. And I, I have great hopes that next Thanksgiving, I will be even more thankful for what has begun at East High School. And then finally, I am thankful for my colleagues, Vice President Elliott, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Campos, Commissioner Cruz, Commissioner Evans, Powell, and Unique, who has left. You all have individually, and you have to sort of follow their remarks, and what they say and what they do as Chairpeople of these committees, and what they do in their extra time, to really know why you all should be thankful for their work as individuals. But I am thankful that collectively, we have come together as a Board, and I don't think it's happened like this ever. And that bodes well for our community. I am very thankful that we are doing what we say we are going to do, we are doing what we are supposed to do, and we are beginning to understand, we have to replicate what we do well. So to conclude my report, I will say, my brain is smiling. Thank you. Okay, now we move on to the consideration of resolutions. Can I get a motion to discuss Resolutions 285 to 306?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments or concerns regarding any of those resolutions, 285 to 306?
286, 285, it's a ten-year resolution.
All right, thank you very much. 285 and 286 are ten-year resolutions.
285 is a ten-year resolution.
285. Okay, thank you. 285 is a ten-year resolution, which we will discuss in executive session by law. So we're just going to, the motion, this is a friendly amendment to that motion, is to discuss 286 to 306. All right, so that's, any comments, questions? Yes, Commissioner Adams?
Regarding 286, which is mostly November appointments of teaching staff, some in October, I'm just, I'm concerned about, always, every year, the extent of vacancies, and use of substitutes, and, or, or maybe even just vacancies. So I understand that we're going to be receiving a report later, I can't remember exactly, it came up in Excellence in Student Achievement Committee, the issue of vacancies. So I'm just looking forward to hearing some more, like some analysis of vacancies' effect on achievement. What I'd asked for was a breakdown, to see if the rates of vacancy are the same across our priority focus in good-standing schools, that was one concern, and then also, any other analysis of it, cost-effectiveness, and so on.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Adams, was that a question that you had submitted?
I, I had actually raised it, and I believe that Ms. Turner captured it as a, as a question, and I believe that it was said that there would be, Adele, you can tell, was there a plan for an analysis of vacancy?
Right, it had been brought up, I think, relative to the SEP plans, and to the priority schools, and also to the DSEP, because one of our goals in the DSEP is better hiring practices. So we had been talking about that in that discussion.
Right, exactly. But wasn't there reference to a planned
Yes.
...analysis that's upcoming at some point? Or was it just an agreement to answer my question?
I think it was an agreement to answer your question.
Okay. Thanks, I'm looking forward to it.
For those folks who don't know, and as Commissioner Adams inspired us to do this, we have a question log, which allows us to keep track of questions. If you feel that you have a question that submitted in committee, that you want to make a part of that question log, and Chief of Staff Patty Meljerry is responsible for shepherding that, we've done, she's done a great job at making sure every week, we have the answers that were submitted. And by the way, that wasn't always the history of this district, so we thank her for her work on that. But if any of you feel like you want to make sure your question gets answered, make sure you get them to Shanae, she will make sure that the Chief of Staff gets them, and they will get answered. And, and by the way, when we meet at 7:30 every Tuesday morning, this is for you participation in government students, we go over those questions. So we make sure that there are answers to every question that the Board members have. We discuss them every Tuesday morning at 7:30. Any other comments or questions regarding Resolutions 286 through 306? There being no further questions, all those in favor of Resolutions 286 to 306, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays, any abstentions? Nope, okay, we're good. All right, can I get a motion to discuss Resolutions 307 to 309?
Move it, Mr. President.
There is a, there's a
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I have to abstain on 308.
Can I abstain on 307?
And my vote is no for the, for 307 and 309.
Got that, Madam Clerk? All right, let's move on to a discussion of Resolutions 310 to 311. Can I get a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we got, you got that? All right, any comments, questions regarding Resolutions 310 to 311?
I would just say, those resolutions went through the Finance Committee.
Yeah.
Anything further? Nope. All those in favor of Resolutions 310 to 311, say aye.
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 Aye. How about Resolutions 312? Can I get a motion to discuss Resolutions 312?
Some move.
It's been moved by the Vice President Elliott.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Evans. Any conversation, comments, questions? All those in favor of Resolutions 312, say aye.
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 Ayes appear to have it. And finally, the other category, 313 to 317. I get a motion? Move it.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any comments, questions regarding Resolutions 313 to 317? There being no comments or questions, all those in favor of Resolutions 313 to 317?
It should be 327.
It should be 327?
Yeah.
All right, let's do that again. Can I get a motion to discuss Resolutions 313 to 327?
Some move.
There we go, and a second. Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Any discussions, comments, or questions regarding those resolutions?
Yes, Mr. President. I want to discuss 322. You know, I always vote no on, on union contracts, because I believe that they are really generous. And I think that, as a Board, we're going to have to look at, particularly when you talk about pension costs, and when we're also talking about healthcare costs, we have to look at, how can we renegotiate all of our contracts, such that it is a win-win for our students, and it's a win-win for our employees. And I was concerned, when we are paying, as an incentive, sick time, $100 a day, up to $10,000 per employee. And so that concerns me, that we have that kind of incentive, not only in the Bente contract, but I understand that it's in the other contracts as well. And so until we really begin to, and nobody I know And so until we really begin to, and nobody I know, or very few people, very few organizations that I know, are paid for sick time, and are paid for sick time up to $10,000 per employee. And so we're going to have to look at how do we really begin to renegotiate these contracts, because nobody has any money. And we've got to, and if we're paying this kind of money, and these contracts are this generous, we need to be making sure that every child in this district are 100% college and career-ready. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments or questions regarding resolution 313 to 327? All those in favor of resolutions 313 to 327, say aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
322, no, Mr. President.
All right, Madam Clerk, you recorded that?
Yes.
We're now moving on to unfinished business from a previous meeting, there being none. We'll then move on to new business. There being no new business.
A personal
Yes.
Point of personal
Absolutely.
Privilege, let me just also say, you know, the president has, has been giving us this thanks, and I want to give, thank our president for all of the work that he does also. He, I tend to think he does more work than us all, and has really been a strong leader in leading this board and making, giving the motivation with our kids, and he's just been a strong representative and ambassador on this board and leading us with various governmental entities. And I really do, you know, the broker, the deal that was brokered with the U of R and East High School, and, and, and he puts in an amazing amount of work. He does keep this board informed of everything that's going on, and I really do appreciate that. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, with him giving us thanks, that we also give our president thanks for the amount of time. And, you know, I was like, you know, with that article, that news article that came out, and I told you all, they interviewed my cousin on that talk, that they had misrepresented us in the work that we do here. You know, I, you know, said some things to you all behind closed doors. I don't care what he's, you know, that article, that news report being done, because I know the level of work that this board is involved in. So we want to, on behalf, if I may, on behalf of our colleagues, just want to thank you and the work that you do for us as well. And I do believe that with God's help, we're going to see some changing in this district. I believe it. You know, we honored the School of World of Inquiry tonight, but I remember we honored the girls who won their basketball a few years ago at East High School, were state champions. So I think we're on the right track, but I also think it's my role to make sure that I keep everybody accountable, that we, it's a lot of work that we got to do, and we can't, it's got to be a sense of urgency. So thank you, Mr. President.
I think we're good. The next meeting for the Board of Education is December the 18th, 2014. I want to say one other thing, we're going into, I'm going to need a motion to go into executive session, but before we do that, I want to encourage everyone to take the time, which I know you will, with your families, enjoy some good turkey, or whatever it is, kind of meat, if you eat meat, the G. Because you all, really, everybody working in here, I know is working really hard to make this district better, and it can be very frustrating. So the things that you know are working for you, your families, take the time to really enjoy them. You deserve that opportunity, so thank you. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
No.
Second.
I'm sorry? I, I think I'll, I'll deal with that later. The clerk was reminding me that I had prepared a resolution, but I'll discuss that with my colleagues later. We do have a motion.
A scandal comes out tonight, so let's
Yeah, Malik is trying to see scandal, the gladiators, is that what you call it? We have a motion, we're going to executive session, let me tell you all, we're going to come out of executive session on the second floor. If you have some interest in seeing us come out of session, we'll be leaving right after that, you have to go to the second floor, because that's where we're going to conclude our meeting. Thank you, have a nice night.
Man, this meeting ended sooner than my meeting.
Yeah.
Is this after 8:00? Before 8:00?
Yeah, but you had all those speakers.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right. I'm telling you, no.